We on?
I thought they were.
Now they're all on.
That one little one.
All right, Jinx, they're gonna do this all along. They're not gonna win three in a row against the Brewers at home.
All right.
Sorry.
Shall we? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Belvidere City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank. Frank absent. Gramkowski.
Here.
Hoynes.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Montalbano absent. Peterson.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
All right, thank you. We do not have anybody registered for public comment this evening. We have no public forum. We've switched to, flipped to page two. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, building, planning, zoning unfinished business. We have none this evening. Item two, building, planning, zoning new business. Building department update. Mr. Countryman, good evening.
Good evening. September was a busier-than-usual month. Due to the storm in August, we issued a total of two hundred and ninety-three building permits. And our busy season, we averaged about a hundred and ten. So it's, we've been hustling for construction value just under seven million. Seventeen of those were commercial, two hundred and seventy-six residential. We issued seven single-family homes. Some other building permits of record. We've got the courthouse going quite a bit. They got just about the lower level done. They're moving to another phase of that. Should be finished up next fall, I believe. And then we got the administration building. They're putting foundation walls in out there. We did the footing for the well eleven. And a diesel dispensary upgrade out at the fuel center on Genoa Road. The ComEd substation for Yukon. Bathroom's out at seven twenty logistics for property maintenance. We closed thirty-seven cases. We have three in court. We turned over a house on Gainer to Region One to get that, get that repurposed. And that ends my report. I'll answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Countryman? Feel free to ask. If anybody has any. All the county permits are current, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. All righty, anybody have any questions? Any other questions or comments? Feel free. Floor is open. Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Kip. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item B, Planning Department. Ms. Del Rose, good evening.
Good evening. So in September, we had, as everyone knows, the rezoning on Chrysler Drive. There was also a fence variance on Mary Street. Variancees only go to plan commission. And then we have a public hearing for the car wash next to Little Caesar's tomorrow. So we'll see how that goes. Site plans are pretty much for the projects that Kip referenced. Zoning verification letters are down. There's some downtown activity for new signage and some facade improvements going on. So I'm not sure if they'll get those done before the weather changes. Historic Preservation is actively working on their awards program. Everyone invites have been put out in the mail, so you should be getting those soon. We've got some good winners this year. So it's always good. The property owners really appreciate that kudos and gives them motivation to keep going. If they have other properties, to work just as hard on the other ones. So it definitely pays for itself in public improvements. And then those were the main things. Have been talking on some subdivision replats and whatnot, so we'll see if they move forward next month.
All right, thank you, Ms. Del Rose. If there's any questions for Gina, feel free. Anybody has any? Feel free to weigh in, ask her. I know she can answer them. All right, hearing none. Thank you, Gina. Item C, appointment of Chair of the, for the, of the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission. In your packet was a memo dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five from myself to you, as well as a clerk, appointment of the Chair of the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission. The Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission is comprised of seven members, each serving a five-year term. There is a one-year chairperson term to be served by the commission member, by a commission member at their September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. The commission nominated Carl Ganevo, Ganevo, to serve as chairperson. I would ask for a motion then to consent to and approve the appointment of Carl Ganevo to serve as chairperson of the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for a one-year term ending on May, in May of two thousand and twenty-six. If I could have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Hoynes. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Feel free to ask or weigh in. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? I don't need a voice vote from this one, do? I mean, I don't need a roll call. All those in favor of the appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there are any no's, same sign. All right, motion passed, thank you. Item three, Public Works unfinished business. We have none. Item four, Public Works new business. Item A, Public Works Department update. As you can see, Brent Anderson is not sitting in that chair. It's Assistant Director Jordan Keck. Jordan, good evening.
Good evening. Just one quick update. I placed a handout on your desk for the two thousand and twenty-five leaf collection program that will begin on the north side of town the week of October twenty-seventh. So we'll put this in the shopper as well as the city's website and the city's newsletter.
All righty, and if there's anybody who has any questions related to that or anything else, I know that Jordan could answer them. Feel free to ask. All right, moving on. Item B, four B. In your packet was a memo from Director Anderson dated ten-two of twenty-five regarding West Sixth Street corridor review. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. We completed a review of the West Sixth Street corridor from Pearl Street to Appleton Road. A total of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-two vehicle speeds were recorded from September eighth to September second along West Sixth Street with an average speed of twenty-three miles per hour and an eighty-fifth percentile speed of twenty-nine miles per hour. The highest speed recorded was fifty-five miles per hour. Taking into account the on-street parking and the number of access conflicts along this corridor, the posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour is appropriate. And then in regards to the intersection reviews, I'll spare you guys from reading all that out. But based on all the gathered information and IDOT's manual on uniform traffic control devices, no changes are warranted at this time.
Okay. All righty, if there's any questions or comments regarding that information, feel free to ask. If anybody has any questions or any comments. Alderman Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. I do, and I think it's just a typo, but at the very bottom of page three, it lists the intersection at Ruby Street instead, instead of Tenth Avenue and Sixth Street. Somehow a gremlin inserted the Ruby Street in there. I'm sure that's a.
Yeah, that must've just been a typo when, from Brent using an old form or something like that. But yeah, it should be six and ten.
Yes. Well, it's close anyhow, Tenth versus Ruby. But, yeah. Anyhow, thank you. Thank you for that, Alderman Peterson. Any other questions? Feel free. You can, if you haven't looked them over, you can certainly look them over. As you recall, the council recalls, maybe not all the council members were here, maybe, no, you weren't, but we had put a stop sign on Sixth and Union. And at the time, at the time, it seemed like probably an appropriate thing to do. Director Anderson did mention to us that it did not meet the criteria for a stop sign there. And by golly, he was right. We had all kinds of issues. Of course, it was one block away from Pearl Street, and it created a, really more of a hindrance than it did a probably safety, so benefit of safety. So anyhow, these are some of the streets along the corridor on West Sixth Street. If anybody has any comments, if you don't have any now, look them over and feel free to weigh in. Alderman Burrton?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Director Anderson, who's not here, and Jordan, I'm sure he had a lot to do with this. I brought this up, I don't know, a month or so ago. Anyway, I wasn't expecting such a report, report. So thank you very much for that. Lot of information here. I guess, try to keep it short here. One of the main questions I have and that people have asked me, not saying we need it or anything, but question is why don't we have a stop sign, if anybody knows, at Sixth and Fifth? And before anybody wants to answer that, because basically with, for anybody that's not familiar with the area, you have a school on a very large block, and then we have a four-way stop on one corner, four-way stop on another corner, four-way stop on another corner, and then this corner, there's no four-way stop. So that was just a concern, if you know the reason for that.
Yeah, so the four-way stop at Sixth and Seventh was before my time, so I'm not entirely sure why that one was put in. I don't even really know if it meets the requirements. But if it is something the council wants to do, we are willing to put up a stop sign at Sixth and Fifth. It kind of matches the school, and the conditions are very similar to that Sixth and Seventh intersection. So if that's something you guys want to do, we are willing to do that.
Thanks again. Yeah, so I didn't want to jump into anything because we, we kind of went through this before. But at the same time, so if we take no action on this, we won't see it again? Is that correct, unless we refer back to committee?
You are a committee, so if you don't take action, you will not see it again. This is brought to committee in the future.
Refer back to, because I guess in my mind, I didn't know if anybody has an idea if they want to do anything to this, but I do get a lot of complaints, as you know, Mayor, about Sixth Street. Maybe if everybody, I don't know how familiar everybody is, if maybe want to drive down Sixth and we could come back and see if anybody has any ideas.
You're always moved to postpone to the next committee meeting.
It was just a thought.
Okay. I'll come back to you and Alderman Peterson.
Mayor, the only comment I would make is it'd be my observation that Seventh Avenue would have been the route mostly used by, by school buses over time, and they would have, they would have come and gone from the backside of Washington School there in that lot. So I think it was probably primarily to facilitate school bus traffic.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I think that is. I do know that Fifth, we have a, a school safety, we've been working with school safe zone. And so the sidewalks, the intersection, the streets are all of concern. If you want to, as we had had discussion about this, Brent and I and Jordan, and if that's something the council, it would mirror, it would mirror what takes place on Seventh. It certainly isn't close like the one on Union was, that was created all kinds of problems. However, when you look at it, some of the children that live to the east of Washington School, just as to the west, that come down Sixth Street, they would be inclined probably to use Fifth Street to enter into Washington School, either from the backside at Seventh or from the front at Fifth. So it's, it's up to the council, up to the committee, up to the council, what they choose to do. Alderman Peterson?
I would add, you know, the same problem as the city council had when they added the stop sign at Union, is that people tend, tended to ignore it, you know, not being familiar with that being there. And if you're gonna have school kids crossing at what they thought was a four-way, four-way stop, once they start out across that crossing, if we don't have good enforcement and make sure everybody knows, we're probably gonna get kids hit in that crosswalk.
That is a good point. Alderman Burrton?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I agree. I, I thought the same thing, so I just thought maybe we want to look at it. We, we don't want to cause more harm than good, of course.
So if you want to postpone this and bring it back, as the city attorney said, correct? Table it? You could do that if you like and give it some more thought, or you can bring it back at a later date. It's whatever the council chooses to do. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer. So whatever you want to do.
And Mr. Mayor, I would remind the council, I think they've heard me say this like a broken record in the past, but if after a traffic study, the intersection does not meet the warrants, you're really not supposed to put the signs up. The Illinois Vehicle Code is pretty clear. You cannot put traffic control signs up. You cannot put, excuse me, change the speed zones unless you've done a traffic study. And it's euphemistically called meeting the warrants, but you meet the requirements of that, that manual. If you do put them up at some point in the future, IDOT might or might not do an inventory of the city and then or may or may not make you take them down at that point. More importantly, we've had one case already where we had a change in speed signs up. If you recall, Newburgh Avenue, it turned out there were no warrants ever done, which means with some, a real, real smart person, that case was a traffic engineer from another jurisdiction, realized we hadn't done the warrants and were able to successfully defend the prosecution of that case because the, the stop signs, or the speed limits in that case were, did not meet the warrants. So they were unlawful. He was able to beat the ticket in that case. So those are the situations. I, I guess there's a little bit of liability if you put them up and they didn't meet the warrants and some kid's killed because somebody blew them off. I don't think the city would face any liability. I think we're protected by the Tort Immunity Act, but it raises that specter, so.
I would agree. Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. At this intersection we're talking about, is there crossing assistance during the school hours at this intersection? Crossing guards or crossing assistance of any type? We not know that.
You know, I, I'm not sure about that. I don't know if there is crossing guards that operate at any of those intersections on Sixth. I know there are crossing guards over on Allen and Fifth, and there's crossing guards on Seventh and Allen, but they do have crossing guards there. But I don't know, I don't know. I'd have to check. Chief, do you know? Chief Woody?
I know there used to be years ago, but I don't believe they have them on Sixth anymore.
Okay, maybe we need to contact the school board and see if we can get them to do something about these intersections. I mean, I understand they're reluctant to spend money on things, but I think the safety of our students is important, and maybe we ought to make a, a statement that the board should look at this and put something safe there if we can't put a sign there.
I know that in, up at the high school up on East Avenue, they have volunteer, right? Chief, is that right? Volunteer, crossing guards, adults?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I, I don't know, I assume that that's part of District one hundred, reaching out and providing those crossing guards. You know, perhaps that's something that they may be interested in doing, but they can be approached, approach them with that. If we haven't, as I said, I know Director Anderson's not here this evening, so I may not have all the information either. But, so. Anybody, any pleasure? Any, does anybody have any, anything they want to, motion or they want to do or whatever? Alderman Burrton?
Thanks again, Mayor. So yeah, I'm not pushing for a stop sign or anything, but I'd be, if, if we could take some time, if I could refer it back to committee, make a motion to bring it back to another committee, everybody take a look at it, and we can choose to do nothing if need be.
If there's a motion to postpone, we'd need a second vote. Alternatively, the mayor can always put another Jennifer on stage.
We'll bring it back. We'll bring it back.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Alderman Stevens?
Fifth Avenue used to stop at Eighth Street and didn't go through to Sixth Avenue until about the early two thousands, till they developed that area. That might be why there's never been a stop sign there, because there was no street till around two thousand.
Yeah. I think as Jordan pointed out, Assistant Director Keck pointed out, and Alderman Peterson pointed out, that they, if they don't warrant them, when you put them in, you know, it does, the reason they don't, the reason they don't warn them is, one, is that the locations don't require because of studies like this, they don't call for them. And then two, I think you're right. I think that you have a false sense of security, and you have to be careful about that, because if you get children that think that they're going to, people on Sixth are automatically gonna stop, I'll guarantee you they didn't, because I blew through Union Avenue about every other morning on my way to work. And, you know, so, but we'll bring it back. How's that? Alderman Peterson?
Alternatively, Mayor, I would, I would make a motion to accept the report as, as stated, maybe offer the suggestion that, that it be provided to school District one hundred for their edification, and they, if they want to give some thought, they probably have no idea of these traffic counts. They probably should know them, and I don't know if they still have a patrol boy program or something like that, but they probably ought to be, be aware of how many, how many vehicles are circling that facility, because I'm sure it's not near as many as what are at, at East, East Avenue and Sixth Street, but they guard that crossing, so maybe they would guard this one.
I would agree. Was that a motion, Alderman?
I'll, I'll make that as a motion.
Okay. I think that's a good idea, as we've talked about. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Burrton. Thank you both. All right, motion to go ahead and share this traffic report with the school district to see if they're, if there's anything they choose to do on site as they do at other school property, other schools. All right, we have a motion on the floor then. If there's no other debate or discussion about that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. Item C, four C, Allen Street Regional Retention and Infiltration Basin Project, Construction Engineering for that. In your packet was a memo from Director Anderson dated ten-two of twenty-five regarding just that. Assistant Director Keck?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the city has awarded the I E P A Green Infrastructure Grant Opportunities Grant Project for the Allen Street Regional Retention and Infiltration Basin to Entrack Group in the amount of eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and seventy-one cents. Attached to this memo is a proposal from CES for the construction engineering portion of this project in the amount of fifty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I would recommend approval of the proposal from CES to complete the construction engineering for the Allen Street Regional Retention and Infiltration Basin Project in the amount of fifty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This work will be paid for from grant funds and capital funds.
Thank you. I guess I'm confused, so I'm gonna try to get some clarification. I see that we get a grant for six-hundred, or eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, and we're gonna have to pay for a project that's fifty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This is gonna be paid for by the grant that we got. Is that from the six-hundred, or eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-two? That we're gonna pay this fifty-six, five-hundred-and-fifty?
Well, because I know that the, the grant is eighty percent funded and then twenty percent match, so we're gonna match twenty percent of this. And I don't know what the total numbers come out to, but twenty percent we will cover.
So that's where the statement capital funds comes from, then?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay, thank you. You, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network is a statewide mutual aid system for all public work agencies in Illinois in response to natural or man-made disasters. Attached to this memo is their brochure, which highlights the many benefits of being a member of this network. Annual dues for being a member is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I would recommend becoming a member of the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network at an annual cost, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
All right, if I could have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Albertini. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Works a lot like MABUS with the fire department, pretty cheap investment for some well-needed help when we have any of that. So, any questions? Alderman Peterson?
Thanks. Just one, Mayor. Does each participating municipality take, take charge of covering the, the insurance needs for the, the participating employees, or does that come, does that come from this agency?
No, it's set up a lot like the other mutual aid agreements where if we send equipment, our insurance covers the equipment. If they send equipment to us, same thing. If workers, if we send laborers out, they're covered by our workers' comp and vice versa. Obviously, if there's reimbursement from the state or for the feds on a natural disaster, then we'd get coverage for our employees.
But we would be indemnified if somebody got injured working on our, in our municipality?
No. Their, their workers' comp covers their employees. Our workers' comp covers our employees.
Right. Some, if, if somebody's here on a mutual aid from another municipality and they're injured or their equipment, their equipment is somehow damaged, they, they take care of that end of it themselves, right?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. All righty. Any other questions? Feel free to ask. All right, hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed. Thank you. Item five, other unfinished business. We have none this evening. Item six, other business. Sickich CPA LLC Audit Review, we have with us here this evening, Mr. Nick Baba. Nick, good evening, and you go over this with, with the council. Good evening. John, would you hit that?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, John.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name's Nick Baba. I am a principal at Sickich and the principal to oversee the city's audit. I'm here to report to you on the April 30th, 2025 fiscal year end. So as, as customary with an audit the size of Belvedere, we issue a, a variety of reports that are in front of you tonight for your review. I'll highlight some items out of the annual financial report, talk about the opinions, but I know I'm standing between you and a bear's game tonight, so I'll keep my comments brief.
That's all right.
In terms of the, in terms of the financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. So an unmodified opinion means that as of April 30th, 2025, the city's financial position is, is in good standing and it is, it, we've issued what's called a clean opinion. So it means that this financial information can be relied on for those interested in the net position, fund balances of the city of Belvedere. So that's clean opinion, and again, that's the highest level of assurance that you want to receive as part of a, a fiscal year-end audit. This year, consistent with the last couple of years, we have evaluated federal and state grant spending as is required in any fiscal year-end audit. Belvedere's grant activity has certainly ramped up over the last few years, so what we're required to look at on a fiscal year-end basis is both state and federal grant spending. In the case of this fiscal year, the city spent $615,000 in state grants and then 3.3 million in federal grants. So the federal grants are the, the more involved of the project in that the feds require what's called a single audit if a organization spends more than $750,000 in federal grant money. So 3.3 million, well above that threshold, and, and actually, there were three programs this year that drove that. So highlighting those with you tonight, 890-some-odd thousand were spent, spent down from the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. That, that was spent on the primary clarifier project. There is a $1 million grant with the CDBG program that was on equipment, and then 1.2 million through the IEP A on the well number 11 project. So that was a, a big undertaking this year, three major programs in a single audit. That's, that, that's a lot. As part of a single audit, we have specific detailed compliance testing over those expenditures specific to those grants, so based on the programs that the federal government sets for those grants. So pleased to report that based on, on the testing of those programs, we did, didn't issue any instances of non-compliance or questioned costs in regards to what those programs called for. So clean opinion on the federal spending, which is always really important, and kudos to the city for continuing to, to ramp up their, you know, their grant programs. It's become very involved and this is a reflection of that. So overall, just in terms of, you know, kind of wrapping things up, the city is allowed six months from its fiscal year-end, so, so through October to issue their financial statements and complete their audit. We finished everything up and finalized in September, so a few weeks ago, so the city's in good standing and in compliance with those time requirements. I certainly want, want to thank Sarah for her help and her capacity in the, in the finance role. Everything went very smoothly. It is a, a long process that really starts in, in March, so it's, it's no short effort, but again, I thank, you know, Mayor and council for having me here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you folks might have. Thanks.
All right. If anybody has any questions for Mr. Baba, feel free regarding the audit. Feel free to ask. The floor is open. All right. Well, I want to thank Sickich. I want to thank you, Nick, for your work here on behalf of the city and with the city, and thank you to Sickich. We're very comfortable with knowing that our audits are going to meet any examination and certainly appreciate it.
Of course.
Alderman Peterson?
Mayor, I did have one, one question with regard to the audit of, of the various pension funds, and there was a, there was a column for contributions as a percentage of, of covered payroll, and I, I wondered what relation that have. I'm more used to seeing the percentages as a percentage of accrued unfunded liability. Is there any relationship between, between those two, two terms and how, how is that more useful than the unfunded liability?
That's a great question. So there, there isn't a correlation between those two, what, what that, that first percentage is, so the contributions made by the city in relation to covered payroll. So in the case, I'm looking at the police pension fund this year. So the city contributed 1.9 million towards the pension fund to fund the net pension liability, and that compares to 3.4 million of covered payroll. So the entire payroll of the police department, police pension fund, what that contribution represents is it's, it's about 56% of the payroll that's, you know, that is covered for a fiscal year. Now, the percentage of what's funded against the pension liability is a, is a different percentage, and for the police pension fund specifically, that schedule here. So the pension liability for the police, police pension, most recently measured April 30th, 2025, 19.5 million, down from 19.7 million, 62.8% funded. So what that means is that the assets that the city and the pension fund has accumulated over time funds 63% of what actuary is determined to be that liability, and the city's funding to be 100% compliant or 100% funded by 2040. So I hope, does that help?
It, it did, and you know, I just wondered comparatively for the, for the percentage in 2025, our, our contributions, say, just for an example, for the police pension fund, were 55.9% of the, the covered payroll. Does that, I just wondered how, how that places us comparatively, you know, vis a vis other like-sized municipalities. Are we in, in range? Is that something standard?
I would say that this percentage i- is probably more all over the board. I think the funded status, the 63% is more what is going to be of interest in terms of where is the city at funding that liability. Comparatively speaking, municipalities across the state, I see more in the 50% range for that. So I, I think the set, the city's done a nice job of working towards being 100% funded by 2040 and is working with the actuaries to make sure that that happens.
I agree. Be interesting to see if the state does their part.
Yeah. I, I, I think as we approach 2040, will, will there be changes in the, in the legislation? Will they kick the can down the road on that? Who, who knows? But I think, you know, 63% comparatively is, is higher than what I typically see.
Definitely. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Baba? Feel free. All right, hearing done. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Likewise. Thanks.
All right. With that being said, I would ask for a motion to accept and approve the audit as presented by Sickich for the fiscal year ending April 30th of 2025. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Feel free to weigh in. All right, hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? All right. Motion passed. Thank you very much, and thank you again, Mr. Baba. Item B. We have the 2026 IML Risk Management Association Annual Review. In your packet was a memo dated October 1st, 2025 to Mayor's Village Presidents, Town, Village Presidents and Town Presidents from Brad Cole, CEO of IML Risk Management, regarding our 2026 RMA coverage renewal. I know that Finance Director Turnipseed had been working with, on this and with this as well. Did you, Sarah, have anything that you wanted to talk about regarding this? Yeah?
No, it's pretty typical, 5%, I believe, in this last year.
If you look at the, at the, oh, I'm sorry. So the increase was 5% from last year, and the difference that that 5% makes is 39,000, increased 39,306.96. So as everything, it goes up, we have paid these, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director, Finance Director Turnipseed, we have paid these in full and we get a 1% discount, so we will see a 4% as we pay that early in full, and that's usually normally what we do. If we can pay it, we, we do. So with that being said, I would ask, before we have any discussion, let's see, we have the motion, we don't have a motion. I would ask for a motion to approve the 2026 IML Risk Management Association Annual Renewal in the amount of $797,217.50. If I could have that motion, motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Hoines. Thank you. Any questions, any comments on that motion? Feel free to weigh in. Alderman Peterson?
Mayor, I would, and, and just Director Turnipseed, there is, there is no alternative option basically, right? I mean, we're not, we're not looking at an option A, B, or C. This is probably as good as it gets, I would be sure.
Option one is to pay it in full by November 14th, which is the best option. There is a mid-max option that is not presented here tonight. It's something the city utilized years ago. I think it did not work out into our favor, so we have not looked at that.
That was what I was wondering, is there, you know, is there a, a different vendor option?
A different vendor?
Yeah.
That is not something we looked at. That'd be up to the council or the mayor.
Yeah. I, I will say this, as long as I've known, that has been our insurance provider, along with other municipalities, every municipality that I know of anyhow, I don't know of any other insurance insurer that would insure the city of Belvedere.
I, I don't either. I'm not aware of one, and this has been, I think they've been representing Belvedere for, for literally for, for decades. I don't know if there is a better, a better alternative, to tell you the truth.
There, there are insurance companies available that some municipalities, larger than us frankly, utilize. For example, I think Chicago, perhaps Elgin, some of the color county communities do use other insurance companies for their, for their book of business. RMAs, I LMA is always been, I can't remember the last time we actually went to market looking at other vendors. They were always pretty much the best deal in town for communities our size, but the other huge benefit is they provide a lot more than just insurance. They provide virtually all of our trainings for risk management requirements, everything from sexual harassment to training for public works on steel boots and everything else like that to mitigate losses. So it's a lot more than just an insurance company.
And I think the 5% increase they're asking for isn't enough to, to make you think that we should start, start shopping around, not like when you get a renewal from your home and auto policy that, that drives you to look for a different vendor because you're getting taken to the cleaner.
I would agree. I would agree with that, none that I know of anyhow, but if the council chooses in the future, as we go forward, we can certainly look and see who else may be available to shop around with. We can certainly explore that. You bet. We have a motion. We do have a motion on the floor. If there's any other questions or comments, feel free to ask. All right, hearing done. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you. Motion passed. And then last, lastly, item 6C, in your packet is a memo from me to you regarding, and the Fire and Police Commission dated September 24th, regarding the reappointment of Carlos Villarreal to the Fire and Police Commission, the city of Belvedere. Fire and Police Commission is comprised of three members, each serving a three-year term. Mr. Carlos Villarreal is serving a term that expired in April and has agreed to serve another three-year term ending April 30th of 2028. So the recommended motion would be a motion to consent and to approve to the appointment of Mr. Carlos G. Villarreal to the City of Belvedere Fire and Police Commission for a three-year term ending April 30th, 2028. If I could have that motion, please. Motion by Alderman Hoines, second by Alderman McGee. Thank you very much. Any questions regarding that motion? Feel free, try and answer them. All right, hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed or abstentions, same sign. All right. Motion passed. Thank you very much, and that is all we have on the agenda this evening. I do want to thank Chief Woody also for, today we had a junior police academy at the Park District Building. We had youngsters in grade school, and they came and the chief got to swear them in, and he certainly made a good impression on them, and I want to thank you and your command staff for being there. Certainly appreciate it. So with that being said, could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? All right, for the record, we adjourned at 6:46 PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of your evening.